I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education for Tuesday, January 10th. May I have a roll call, please?
Here.
Mr. Edson?
Here.
Mr. Block?
Here.
Mr. Scribner?
Here.
Mr. Bergner?
Here.
Mrs. Golan?
Here. Thank you very much. Under the President's report, I would like to report that the Boards of District 115 and 67 are interviewing candidates this week for our new superintendent. We have committees made up of administrators, teachers, staff, parents, community members. We have a really wide assortment of participants who are helping us with this, and I want to thank all of them for the time that they're giving us this week. It's an exciting process. There are some great candidates because they really are looking forward to coming to work at a great school district like this high school district is. So it's a long week for the Board members. I want to thank all of them, and I want to thank Pam Burke and Janice Patterson and Ann Whipple for all that they've done to help us organize this week. There's a lot of little details involved, so thanks to all of them. And that concludes the President's report, and so I will move on to the superintendent report.
Madam President, members of the Board and members of the audience, thank you for being here tonight. Well, let's start with Jay Hoffman, Principal of Lake Forest High School, for a school report.
Well, I'd like to deliver the sad news that we lost one of our sophomores. He was killed by a Metro train yesterday morning. His name was Fareed Hussain, and he was a sophomore who was very involved in our drama program. As a freshman, he was in our play, Our Town, and as a sophomore, he was in the play, The Frog Prince Adaptation. He also was a pretty vibrant member of our gamers' club. It's a big loss to our community. He had a lot of great friends, and especially a big loss to our staff. He was a very learned, very well-spoken young man, and our staff was pretty shaken up by it, as well as several of our students. I'd like to commend our social workers and our crisis team for what they've done for our students and our staff, and I'd also like to commend the parents of our community who have banded together to help the Hussain family and to help us in our time of loss. So we really mourn his loss. So let's have a good thought for the family. He is survived by two siblings who are at Deerpath, fifth and seventh grade, and so our heart goes out to them also.
Thank you, Jay, and you echo our thoughts and prayers for the family as well.
All right. Thank you, Jay. Board members also would like to say thank you and congratulations to the approximately 140 students at Lake Forest High School who are now Illinois, classified as Illinois State Scholars. And then we have a National Board recipient. Jay, is this the first? I think this is our first or second teacher. We have, I'm pleased to report that we have a teacher who has attained National Board Certification status, which is, Board members, one of the most prestigious teaching awards in the country. Basically, you're classified as a master teacher at the national level, and this goes to Jennifer Van Skak.
Jennifer Van Skak, and she is now our seventh nationally board-certified teacher.
Oh, seventh. Seventh, okay. Well, it's two years in a row that we've had someone, so congratulations to Jennifer. And then to Board members, I'd like to encourage you to consider Saturday, January 28th, as a professional development opportunity for members of the Board of Education because the forensic rat-lit law firm is presenting a morning conference across a variety of topics that could be of interest to Board members. I will be attending. I hope each of you would give some thought to this. Open Meetings Act, FOIA requirements, the new changes in teacher evaluation, Senate Bill 7, all kinds of topics that are available. It's a potpourri of items that Board members, you could attend and to gain some professional development training and hours for US schools. By the way, all school Board members are required to receive a certain amount of training now each year, so I think this would be a good opportunity for you to consider that. And then finally, also in a related matter, on February 6th, the evening of February 6th is the Ed Redd Dinner, and this is the lobbying organization that supports the suburban school districts of Chicago in trying to positively impact legislation in Springfield. And this year's dinner speaker is Charlotte Danielson, who is the country's, one of the country's leading advocates and specialists on revising teacher evaluations. And you're actually going to hear a report tonight that's where District 115 is adopting a modified Charlotte Danielson model. So I actually think you should find this very interesting tonight, and I hope you're going to attend this dinner also. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Griffith. I do plan on attending the law seminar. If anybody else is planning on doing that or attending the Ed Redd Dinner, would you please contact Pam tomorrow so that she can send in the reservations? All right. Thank you very much. Now we have public participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the Board on a topic that is not listed on the agenda? Okay, seeing no one, we will move on. We have our first report discussion, which is Certified Evaluation and Professional Development. Dr. Griffith?
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Golan. Well, Board members, we thought that the Board would like to hear changes that are going on within the professional community, much of it based on also requirements that are being, have been handed down from the legislature, a major overhaul of how teachers are to be evaluated, as well as our own related professional development program. So pleased to report to you that Jim Sullivan is here tonight with Jen Knight, and I think the two of them are going to tag-team to share with you over a 10- to 15-minute period here about what's going on inside Lake Forest High School on this pretty important topic. So Jim and Jen, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Griffith. First, we're going to talk about teacher evaluations and the two pieces of legislation that came out, PARA and SB7. PARA is Performance Evaluation Review Act, and that came out in 2010. SB7 is Senate Bill 7, doesn't get an acronym unfortunately, but both of them deal with tying teacher evaluations and principal evaluations to student performance. Actually, PARA is the one that does that directly. SB7 takes it a step farther, and that ties performance ratings of teachers to personnel decisions. So that includes hiring, firing, RIF, those kinds of things, and that'll be based on performance. What the state has done is they've created a four-tier system for performance ratings, and that replaces the three-tier. The four-tier is excellent, proficient, needs improvement, and unsatisfactory, and that replaces the excellent, satisfactory, and unsatisfactory. Now, by adding a fourth tier, what they've done is they are starting a process where you can more clearly delineate what level a teacher is at, and that's because many teachers were, in some statewide studies, they studied 41,000, ISBA studied 41,000 teachers and found that 93% were excellent and .4% were unsatisfactory with a three-tier system. And they think that many of the teachers are proficient, and that's a very good rating, perhaps not excellent. The other purpose was to get some validity in the rating because it's going to be really a statewide model based on Charlotte Danielson, as Dr. Griffith said. There's going to be 35 hours of training involved for all evaluators to become proficient at evaluating, and department chairs will be able to do this. If they're in the association, it'll have to be worked out with the association to allow that group to be an evaluator. IDs who have 75s and are practicing with them, they can be evaluators right away or principals. They also, it establishes teacher performance for rating teachers and for, as I said, riffing them. It also accelerates the tenure process for excellent teachers. It will take three years for excellent teachers. If they get excellent every year, they can get tenure in three years instead of four. If you move to another school, you can get tenure in two years if you had excellent ratings in the school that you're coming from. It also has some things where the ratings themselves are going to go to the ISBE, and they're going to be published, so that if a school does have ratings that seem a little bit skewed, that's going to be available to the public, to the newspapers and all that. So there's going to be more transparency. Other things that this does, that the legislation does, is to require four years of training, four hours rather, four years is different, four hours of training for school Board members on school finance and education labor law. So that's going to be starting next year for the new Board members. It adds more transparency to negotiations. You've lived a little bit of this. You know that if there's an impasse declared after seven days, then best offers go to the ISB website, and they're published on our website as well. The last thing we did is we came up with, we're involved in a joint committee made up of members of the Teachers Association and of the administration. And what we did first is we looked at the legislation. So basically, I gave a presentation of SB7 and PARA and how that changes everything. We then formed a book group and read the Charlotte Danielson book so that we could be well-versed in what the whole state plan was based upon. And the state plan was written by the ISBE along with both teacher unions in the state, IA and AFT. So they all agreed on this approach. So we looked at the book, and then what we did as a committee is we looked at our current evaluation system and saw how the Charlotte Danielson plan fits into it, and that's what we're doing right now. Then we're going to develop rubrics for every stage of the evaluation process, for every category that we have, we're going to have a rubric for it so that there can be more reliability and more validity. And finally, what's going to happen is there's going to be a sequence of dismissal list, and that actually for us will start next year. Four-tier starts this year. But what that will mean is that people will be rated in four different groupings, and the groupings are the basis on RIF and on retaining faculty. So it's possible under the new system for someone who has just a few years' experience, who's been rated excellent every year, to bump someone who's been rated at a lower level every year, so even if they have 25 years' experience. So what they want is what's best for kids. What's best for kids is to have excellent teachers in the classrooms, and that's what the whole thing's all about. Thank you.
I'm going to take this one step further and link to our professional development. I want to back up a little bit because Jim, not surprisingly, didn't give himself quite enough credit when he talked about the work of the joint committee. The joint committee, by definition, has to be comprised of an equal number of administrators and of members of the bargaining unit. So for our purposes, and actually as kind of a positive piece of the school culture, we had a number of teachers who wanted to be a part of this book group. Can't be the joint committee, but it has to be a book group. So how many people are you working with?
Twenty-one.
So Jim is working with 21 of our teachers, and I think we can lump this under the category of professional development, to read the Charlotte Danielson book, to work through a comprehensive rubric based on the different pieces of what is best teaching in the classroom, and to really have a cooperative and collaborative idea of what is best teaching, which is tied to evaluations, which is a little bit of an emotional subject as you, the certified teacher. So I think the work that Jim has already done and the relationships already formed in this experience kind of are illustrated in the fact that even within this current contract moving forward, it was a joint decision and a supportive decision that we'd move ahead to the four-tier rating for this year's evaluations, as I'm sure you guys noticed somewhere along the way. So I did want to, and I'm losing this. I'm not getting it. Oh. Ta-da. Put no more? Oh, jeez. All right. You guys will have to bear with me. I was so caught up with Jim. I lost myself somewhere along the way. But this other piece that we have, there's kind of two categories of professional development I want to take a moment to focus on, and let me be very clear that this is a sampling of what's going on in the building. It's certainly not comprehensive. This first piece is one that we've kind of given an umbrella concept of best practices at Lake Forest High School, and specifically, it's been working with Dr. Jim Polzin, who is a consultant that we've had a relationship with for about four or five years. And what has been critical to the success of this program is that it truly has been a homegrown program. Polzin has come in, worked with our teachers in small cohorts lasting over the course of a year, and focused on very concrete, tangible best practices in instruction. It's formed relationships across departments. It has been one that has been cyclical, that teachers have gone back to. And these second and third pieces that I'm going to speak to are pieces that are new this year, but are really outgrowths of the work that Jim Polzin has done with, at this point, over half of our teaching group. So the first piece is this administrative piece, which, as you have seen with the recent legislation, is timely, but it's also an appropriate outgrowth of where we've been. Although we have had administrators go through the teacher training with Jim Polzin, it seemed appropriate to have a training that really spoke to where they were in the building structure and in their role as evaluators. So over the course of this year, we've spent time with Jim taking a close look at what are best practices and observation, evaluation. How do those best practices relate to the best practices our teachers are bringing to the classroom in terms of instruction? We have met as a principal's leadership team, working with Jim twice now, and anticipate meeting with him a couple more times over the course of the year, progressively working through how are these things tied to Lake Forest culture and Lake Forest teaching. The other piece that is new is this bottom piece, which is the Advanced Techniques in Best Practice, which is a Stage Two. It's a Round Two cohort that teachers can participate in. And the big piece of this is that there's a transition in who the leaders of the group are, that we moved from Polzin, actually to two of our faculty members, Dr. Amy Burtman and Elizabeth Wolf, who ultimately are leading this group through not only some further work with best practice, but also some research. We have learning styles research going on in the classroom, some deconstruction of evaluation tools, some real specific and real close reads at what are the tools that we're using in our classrooms. I do want to mention as a side note that the foundation has been extremely supportive of this program in the past year, as well as some of our other professional development Specifically, the Kessler, sorry, the National Board Certification and the Newberry Institute, they've also helped with, oh, jeez, I'm just lost. So you have to follow along with me on this one. A few other pieces that we've done, and I'm only going to mention these in brief. Our Kessler Teaching Institutes are the courses that we have done, kind of in-house, within-house expertise, and if you look in your Board packet at some of the specific items in there, they are pretty heavily tied to 2020. An additional 2020, which is our 21st Century Skills, our Look Forward, how does technology relate to not only our curriculum but our instruction classroom practice? Another piece that I would like to mention is the Tech Bytes, which has been coming out of the library, and Laura Grig, one of our librarians, has been instrumental in that work, really focusing on specific items in technology and instruction and taking a close look at what are the opportunities that teachers can move forward with that. As we already mentioned tonight, we are continuing with our National Board Certification. The foundation has been very supportive of Newberry Institutes. And then our department FOKI range, all the way from a focus on advanced placement at the department level to looking at Common Core, to looking at what is the best use of smart boards and instruction, but really the gamut of what is most appropriate for the department. That said, I think it's been, although the new legislation has been a little bit of a spur for us to look at what's going on and has provided some extra incentive, it's been very healthy, and it's been a change that we've made that has made sense for us. We've looked at some of the things that are most important to us as a district and clearly to our teachers, so there's a lot of people in the building that deserve credit, not the least of which is right behind me for that one. So I don't know if there are any questions?
Board members, do you have any questions at this point?
Jim, could you, maybe I missed it, but could you clarify when the new evaluation model, particularly that which would afford the opportunity for someone to get tenure sooner, or for somebody without tenure to bump somebody in the case of a cutback, when that kicks in?
Right. Really, those are two different questions. In order to get tenure sooner, that's part of the PARA. Both of these pieces of legislation, they kind of are interwoven, and there are different rules, but it's starting to become clear which goes with which. To have accelerated tenure, that requires three PARA evaluations, and for us, that doesn't start until 2016. For the four-tier, that starts right now, okay? But in order for us to RIF based on it, that wouldn't be the end of this year, it'd be the next year. Correct. There were some things, in order to use this, you need to have some things that they're requiring specific job descriptions for each type of teaching assignment, which, you know, we had a job description for teacher, but we need more than that by May 10th of last year, and the legislation was signed June 11th of last year. So, you know, and we're also basing this on, we're supposed to be basing it on the state model. Currently, state model doesn't exist, and we're supposed to get 35 hours of training, and currently that also doesn't exist. So, you know, there are some layers that, they're not quite ironed out yet.
So given those provisos, would that mean that we probably wouldn't have this in place even for 2013?
No, we would. For 2013, not the accelerated tenure, but yeah, after next year, riffing can start to be based on this system, but it will take two evaluations, so it's going to be a few years out still. So both of them really will come to bear about 2016, 2015.
Other questions?
Yes. Given all the professional development, could you set that in context of the Vision 2020 program and sort of how that dovetails with what we saw here today?
I think that the professional development is not solely focused on 2020, but at the curriculum at large, there are pieces of the professional development that especially relate to that. The smart board training is specifically one. These Tech Bytes are focused on resources that we already have in-house but are maybe not utilizing as effectively as we could related to instruction. The Kessler Teaching Institutes, some of those, and those are largely teacher-driven. The demand comes from the teachers that here's a specific topic we'd like to explore further. Additionally, I know, I don't want to short-change what departments are doing in-house on their late start days, and different departments are focusing on areas of technology that are most appropriate. So the focus of science is going to be very different than the focus of the library. There is continued exploration within the departments and then at the PLT, kind of the larger administrative group. Am I helping answer your question, or am I talking around your question?
Well, as I understand, Vision 2020, that's a teacher-led initiative, and it's a joint initiative, right, between both schools?
You're talking about the specific committee or the board goal?
Yes. And how does that dovetail with what Polzin and the rest of this is doing?
The committee is really being used as an advisory group. What do we have in place? Then where do we need to go from here? What are the needs of our teachers? So they have, in this past year, wooed forward, and Jim jumped in on this one, from creating a vision, on which he can speak to a little bit more from last year, and into what are the specific needs to meet that vision? What are the needs of individual teachers and individual departments to reach these goals and to reach these kind of learning expectations?
And Polzin is working with us on a number of things. They're working on us training teachers, and in training teachers, part of 2020 is things like creativity. It's good teaching. And so we've had 65, 70 people already trained using that approach, so that is actually 2020 also. And for 2020 with evaluations, we're learning as administrative staff to be able to evaluate people with those things in mind. So it does back around to it again.
Yeah, let me supplement that, because I think that's an awfully good question. So Jim, correct this or supplement this if you would. I think with the Danielson approach and the new teacher evaluation model that's being constructed for Lake Forest High School, we're talking about a new framework. We're talking about a framework that's based on looking at teacher evaluations from a different point of view, the content of which, the kinds of things we would evaluate teachers on, yet to be determined. So what we're doing is we're forming, and through our professional development too, groups exploring the 2020 standards, actually the new national standards for the Common Core curriculum, which is abstract thinking, self-directed learner, collaborative practices. We're going to, we'll be evaluating classroom sessions more on that in the future than we ever have in the past. So eventually, I think through, and we've asked Jim Polzin, I mean, I know I asked Jim Polzin if he could start to evaluate the Common Core Principles, Common Core Curriculum, and see how that might be applicable to us. Part of the best practice review going on, I'm presuming that's where that discussion is now being had, you know, how does best practice relate to the new national standards, which are very, I think, very in line with thinking about a higher-order thinking skill curriculum. So I think eventually it dovetails. We're going to have a new framework, and we're going to have a new lens through which to learn, to evaluate learning in the classroom.
Yeah, 2020, Polzin, Charlotte Danielson, they all go together because, you know, one is doing it in the classroom, one is being able to recognize what it looks like in the classroom, and finally, it's us evaluating how well that is going. So it all does come together.
I would like to add that professional development is one thing, and we can offer that to our teachers, and they can take different types of professional development. They can go to conferences and things like that, but the real secret is practicing what they've learned, and for them to take away what they've learned from these events and practice it together with an eye on each other, and the actual putting it into use, and that's what the Tech Bytes, that's what this Tier Two group is doing. They're actually practicing it and rating each other and seeing each other, and we're giving them a little bit of time, release time, to be able to go into other teachers' classrooms and rate each other on what they've learned. And that practice on what they've learned is really the key to it all, because just going to the conference is great, but actually doing it is way better.
Other questions, Board members? All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, good job, Jim. Thank you. Jim, there's a little, two things out on the table out there I'd like to ask you to take home with you, okay? Outside, out there in the, when you leave, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, of course. Okay? It's not ticking, no.
All right. No offense to anyone, but I always find those reports to be the best part of the meeting, so thank you again. Moving on, we have our Board Committee reports. We'll begin with our Board Education Committee. Nikki?
The Education Committee has not met since our last Board meeting.
The education committee has not met since our last board meeting and we don't currently have our next meeting scheduled. We tentatively have one scheduled for February 1st. We'll be working with Dr. Griffith on the agenda for that.
All right. Thank you, Nikki. We'll get back to everyone on that date. Next, we have the board operations committee, Dick Block.
Thank you, Madam President. The operations committee met on December 13th and discussed a number of issues. In summary, our progress on our goals to date, which is a practical matter, we've really narrowed down at this point to evaluating and supporting and deciding what's a maximum benefit to the district associated with the Booster Club East Campus project, Diamond Anniversary Campaign, some, some of you may know what it is. And then secondly, to make further progress on our efforts in the operations arena to come up with meaningful benchmarks for our dashboard. And by operations arena, I mean our traditional areas of transportation, food service, building and grounds, information technology and communications infrastructure. In addition to those goals, issues, we spent most of the time at the meeting dealing with the, the East Campus Booster Club project and the details of where that stands. Brian Vandenberg came and made a presentation to us from the Booster Club's perspective as to where things are. And we've scheduled our next meeting for January 19th at 8:00 a.m. in the Wedge Cafe, again at East Campus, at which time the administration and the Boosters Club have committed to have fairly definitive numbers available for the committee in terms of the impacts on the district, avoided costs, potential additional revenues, those kinds of issues, so that the operations committee is in a position to make recommendations to the finance committee and ultimately to the board as a whole as to how best we should proceed in this arena. Todd, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Okay. Thank you very much, Dick. Next is the board finance committee, Jim Carey.
The finance committee met this morning. It was a joint meeting with the District 67 Finance Committee as well. The singular purpose of the meeting was to meet with our external auditors, the accounting firm of Miller Cooper. They walked us through the audit report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2011. They also reviewed with us their, their report on the financial statements as well as their internal control letter, which had a minor control item identified in it. I should say that the two representatives, the partner and manager for Miller Cooper, were very complimentary of the approach the district takes towards the audit, the level of preparedness and promptness in terms of getting data together to facilitate the completion of both audits within about a four-week time span. Good for them, good for us. And again, for, I think it's the third year or fourth year they've met our auditors, four years of consistently good results in terms of their evaluation of our management, financial management and controls. We did also talk about approving a policy that I thought might be on the agenda for tonight relative to disposal of equipment, but maybe we'll do that next, next month. Some excess equipment that we just need to have a board action on to be able to dispose of. That was the sole topic, again, of the, the meeting and we do not have a date for our next finance committee meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jim. I think there was some discussion about whether or not the auditors should come to our meeting, but I think they're going to attend the District 67 meeting. Maybe that will suffice. People can watch that on, on cable TV if they want to hear from them. Otherwise, if you want them here, we can, but...
That'd be great if, do you think they'll try to go to the 67 meeting this month?
Yes.
If so, maybe you could ask them to also talk about the work on 115 since it's virtually identical. Great. Thank you.
When is that meeting? The 26th?
January 26th.
So I, I guess I would tell the public to tune into the District 67 meeting, which is January 26th and it'll be on cable TV after that. All right. That's the end of our committee reports. We don't have any liaison reports this evening, and so we will move on to the action items, the first being the acceptance of the 2011 audit report. Dr. Griffith?
Okay, board members, this has already been commented on by the finance committee, but Alan Albus will give a brief overview for us of the recommendation.
Well, the recommendation is to accept the audit as opposed to approve it, because by statute, we're required to have an independent external audit performed and that's what Miller Cooper is engaged to do. The only comment I'll make relative to the audit is across all funds, expenditures exceeded revenues by $24,000 for this last year. So given, as we are going into the budget, what we had budgeted and the actions that we took and some things falling our way, including the negotiation of the payment of the construction loan from 67, we really worked hard to try and close that gap and we got very close. But again, we're coming off a year with 6% raises and 1/10 of 1% increases in the property tax revenue stream.
Was that 6% raises for all groups?
No, that was in the teacher group, which is our largest expense. No, other groups, no.
I just thought that should be clarified.
Thank you. So we'd recommend your acceptance of the audit as required by statute.
Thank you, Mr. Albus. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education accept the 2011 audit report as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Board members, do you have any questions or comments on this at this time?
Well, just a quick question, and I, because I just don't honestly remember. Is the audit report going to be posted on the website? Is it something that's available through the website for the public? I mean, if the auditors aren't going to be here? Just curious.
I don't know if we've been posting the audit or the AFR. The AFR for sure would be on the website. The audits are available. We have some extra hard copies and we also have an electronic copy that we can post as well.
Fine. Thank you. Use your judgment on this, but it would seem to me that since there have been some inquiries via FOIA, that this is a way to get them out there and make it available to those that have an interest. It's 80 or 90 pages of scintillating reading, but, but, I mean, all kidding aside, put it out there, as well as the management letter, since that could be a point of inquiry as well.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, it's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblen?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mr. Scribner?
Aye.
Mrs. Colan?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Board members, I'm sorry, before we go on to the next topic, I, I wanted to wait until you were finished, but I think the audit was an incredibly, I mean, it was a thorough audit. It was independently evaluation by a firm that is separate from our organization. They, they're an experienced group that works with about 35 school districts in the Chicago area. They report to us that it was, it's a very clean audit. They said they would rank our business office group in the 95th percentile of their school districts. I think many congratulations for the hard work. Goes out to Alan Albus and Jennifer Hermes, who are both here tonight, but also then some key staff behind the scenes like Katie Laboue and, and let's see, who else? Lisa Gillespie in accounts payable and, yep, Beth Reich and Vanessa in payroll and our benefits department. Really a hardworking, great staff, so thank you all to, to a good job. This is, by the way, this kind of report is going to be also brought forward to the 67 board in two weeks. And similarly, unlike any other business group in the state of Illinois, we're responsible for two, business operations for two school districts, so another great job there, too.
Thank you, Dr. Griffith, and I will echo the appreciation of the board because your work does reflect on us and we appreciate what you have done, so thank you. Next, we have the approval of the February board meeting date change.
Yeah, board members, I think we're scheduled for February 14th. And I'm not sure what's so special about that date. Could somebody remind me, what's special about February 14th?
Your wife likes to see.
Oh, it's called Valentine's Day. You're right. I'm sorry. So we received a request from some of our board members to consider moving that up one day to Monday, February 13th. Time and location to remain the same. That's at the discretion of the board, but we can, you know, post adequately out into the community and, and spread the word that we would be moving the date up one day if that's what you wish to do.
Just as a reminder, it is our hope that we'll be approving the next superintendent and it would be a joint meeting and Rick Schuler of District 67 celebrates his anniversary on the 14th, so we thought it'd be nice to him, too. But anyway, it was, it was a good night for both boards and, and that's, that's what our hope and our intent is for the meeting on the, on the 13th, but it will also be a regular meeting of District 115. So may I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education change the date of the February Board of Education meeting from Tuesday, February 14th to Monday, February 13th. Time and location of the meeting will remain the same.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the LFIA board contract. Dr. Griffith?
Yes, board members, I'm pleased to report to you that the Lake Forest High School Teacher Association, the LFIA, met yesterday to act on a tentative agreement that had been struck between the Board of Education and the teachers for a one-year contract. That contract would, would be for the 2011 and 2012 school year and would then, hence would expire on June 30th, 2012. Just in terms of, just very generally speaking, in terms of some major provisions, although it was, it's really quite lengthy in its detail. Alan Albus and perhaps even Jay Hoffman, if he wishes, could share some of the key features for us and then board members, what other board members who participated too, if you'd like to, you know, assist, that would be helpful, too. So Alan, thank you.
I'd be glad to summarize the major financial components. So in regard to salary, there, the contract calls for a freeze in what is called the step increase, and that's the experience credit from year to year. Also a freeze or no change to the base salary number, and that's important because every salary is indexed off of that. In the industry, that, that type of agreement has been referred to now as a hard freeze. That term has evolved over the last few years as the economy has changed and, and districts have gone and negotiated similar contracts. The contract does allow lane movement, so if somebody during the course of the school year, for example, moves, obtains a master's degree and moves from a bachelor's, they would move on the salary schedule and get that credit and get an increase. And it also includes people in the retirement pipeline getting their scheduled increases. But other than that, it's, it's a freeze on both step and base. On health insurance, we have a multitude of plans that people can pick from. One of our plans was called the PPO 100. During, that insurance plan went away not really as a result of our negotiations, but as a decision that was made by the co-op that we belong to. The reason I mention that, though, is that did occur during this contract year, so people had to opt out of that and choose another plan. Other than that occurring, there were no changes in the, in the health insurance benefits in the plan. This agreement, plus the expense reductions that we have implemented, though, will result in a balanced budget for this year, and this is the first time since the economy turned in 2008. So I think that's fairly significant. And again, that's assuming no big change in, in the flow of state revenue. We know where they're behind. We assume they'll be behind, but we're not anticipating another big drop-off on their end. If, if that's the case, it, it would be tight. But again, we anticipate a balanced budget this year. This went a long way to helping us achieve that and for that, we're very glad. Other than that, the changes, there were some minor work rule changes implemented. For example, we'll be implementing direct deposit of paychecks and a lot of cleanup language, incorporation of side letters that had been negotiated or agreed to over the last several years, and then updating dates. A little bit of change around KTI and I'll turn that over to Jay to summarize what that is and what that means.
We had a memorandating of understanding with our union from two years ago that helped clarify and simplify the KTI. That was brought in. We changed the language slightly around to accommodate that memorandum of understanding and there was a slight increase in the amount of pay that a teacher can get for taking the KTI, as most of them elect to take a credit as far as their, what they get out of the KTI. So a little bit of clarification and simplification. One of the important things that happened in this contract was that we did get the four-tier system into our evaluation document. Our evaluation document is inside of our contract, which is unlike some other districts, but we were able to, with the agreement of the LFIA, to put in that four-tier system. They welcomed it and they have embraced working with us to better improve what it is that we look for and how we report out on our evaluation. So we're really happy that they were able to come to that agreement.
Jay, of the non-economic issues, how many would you say there were? My recollection is 30?
We had about 30. Many of them were very, very one-word, two-words. Those were more easily worked out than the, than the, obviously than the economics. A lot of them were good for teachers, good for the board, kind of a win-win in both ends, and all of them are good for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. With that, may I have a motion to approve the LFIA board contract?
I'll move that the Board of Education approve the LFIA board contract as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Board members, do you have any questions or comments about the contract?
I just, I'd like to just say that I'm pleased with the, the hard freeze and where we ended up for the year, but I'm, I'm really struggling with the lack of a multi-year contract after nine months of negotiations. I think it really speaks to a, a lack of acceptance of two very real things. One, that where the teachers currently stand in the marketplace for their compensation and two, the acceptance of the really genuinely fragile position that the district's in financially right now. And I really hope that when we move on to the next set of negotiations, that the discussion can be a little bit more aligned where those things are concerned.
Thank you, Todd. Any other board members?
I'd like to really just thank everyone, the board members who participated in the negotiations and our administrators. It's an extremely complex process. There's a really good reason why I wasn't on that team, but it's been a really instructive process to watch. It's been great to hear from Alan with his frequent updates, really keeping us all in the loop so that we understand the process of negotiation. It's extremely complex, but the bottom line is really, really simple and I don't think anybody ever lost sight of that is, and that's that we had to do what's good for our students. It's good for our students to go to a school that has a stable financial situation and a balanced budget. It's good for our community, too. But it's also good for our students to be taught by very professional staff who are really dedicated to the school and to doing what they're doing. And trying to take all of those factors into account is what makes it so complicated, but I have to commend everyone involved for not losing track of the fact that it is, in fact, about the students. I think that the team did as good a job as they possibly could. They have to start again in a couple of months, but I feel very hopeful because I could see that everyone involved was doing it with the very best of intentions and with the focus that was necessary. and with the focus that was necessary, so thank you all.
Thank you, Nikki. Any other comments?
Yeah, I would just like to echo and agree with everything Todd said and everything Nikki just said. Speaking for myself, I know I'm disappointed that we are where we are. I suspect there are many teachers who feel the same way. I can't speak for them, but I think the hopes on both sides were for something better and longer term. But I don't want that to overshadow the fact that an agreement has been reached, and I thank the teachers for at least realizing the economic reality of the immediate current situation. And I hope, like Todd does, that as we approach the coming years and the coming negotiations, that, you know, there can be a joint understanding as to where we are and where we need to go and what's in the best interest of everybody.
Thank you, Dick. Any other questions or comments?
Five or six months ago, we had a roomful of people here reacting to their concerns about our financial position. We told them at that point in time that one of our multiple objectives was to negotiate a new contract with the Teachers Union that was reflective of current economic conditions. Those economic conditions being very different from those that were in place five years ago when we negotiated the previous contract. I think we made it clear that we were looking not only for a contract that did that, but a multiple-year contract, because to get back to black, which had been our goal as espoused by Harry and the administrative team for the last two or three years, we weren't going to be able to get back there in one year. It was going to have to be a multiple-year effort to do this. Subsequent to that, we had the Teachers Union in here, and we heard their concerns, and obviously, this was a dramatic change from what they had been used to. Over the last five years, they had enjoyed average increases of five percent per year. So I can well understand that taking a zero increase for the current year is a very difficult pill to swallow, but it's reflective of the current economic environment we operate in. My disappointment is that we explained to the union throughout this that we needed a multiple year, and we only got one. So while I'm voting in favor of this, the fact is, this is step one, and we have to have more like it to get back to where we need to be financially and basically provide the security that Nikki alluded to.
Thank you, Jim. Other comments?
All right. Well, there was a lot of work put into this, and I want to thank all of the participants on both sides for their hard work. It would have been nice to have something longer and be able to put off the next step a little bit. That didn't happen, but I am going to thank those teachers who did vote in, vote yes for this because it does help the school, it helps the district, and I know they realize that, and I thank them for the help they gave us this year. So with that, it has been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Scribner?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblin?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mrs. Golan? Aye. Motion carries. And congratulations to both sides. It was a lot of work, and we've got good things ahead for all of us. Next, we have the approval of the Human Resources Report.
Yes, board members, we've learned that this is done much better if we have Jen Knights to help us with what the report is about, so thank you, Jen.
Thank you, and I'm sure you'll all be relieved. I have no PowerPoint associated with this report. I'm sure I could entertain you once again with my attempt at it, but we'll take a pass. I did want to report a few things of interest in these past, just a couple of weeks back at school. First off, I had mentioned in December that we had decided to offer the opportunity for faculty and staff to participate in a fit club, which is much like what it sounds. And we thought we would set a minimum of twenty participants, participate over the course of ten weeks, and I actually think that this group has now earned the title of another shared service as we not only have thirty-four District one fifteen participants, but we have an additional ten participants from District sixty-seven. So that's very exciting. The group gets started second semester next week, and really should be a great experience, faculty working with other faculty at a kind of a holistic level, lifestyle level, and just the camaraderie of a friendly competition where everybody wins or loses, as the case may be. That was a bad joke, but. Another piece, just on our first day back, the PLT group had a presentation from the Flip Flippin' Group. And this is a group that works with various institutions or organizations in education, but also in, at the corporate level and even athletic teams, and they really focus on culture, and they focus on culture through the lens of relationships and skills and leadership, and the combination thereof. And they brought us a look at what they can offer in terms of these trainings for our faculty specifically. They have two different layers of focus for, that they offer to groups, and we took a look at what they had offered at the systems level and were very validated in what we'd done, that we really were in good shape at the systems level and what we had put in place through the five years of our emotional wellness initiative. But we know that our teachers are still looking for things that they can bring directly to the classroom, and for that reason, our PLT group was interested, they were intrigued by some of the specifics that the, they learned about on that date, and the group has offered us scholarships to explore a little bit further. So we anticipated alongside sixty-seven, this is another shared effort, that we will send some faculty members to a Chicago training in March. It's a three-day training. Again, like I said, they're, they offered us scholarships to see what we think about it, and then we will see really what the people at the ground level think of what has been offered. But our administrative team was very interested, both, again, sixty-seven and one fifteen were present.
Jen, could you remind us what PLT is, please?
The Principal's Leadership Team. It's our group of really true department chairs, all the different departments, as well as the Athletic Director participates. So it's kind of your teacher leaders in that group.
Board members, just a quick supplement. So we have a lot in place at Lake Forest High School to help students with connecting with each other, connecting with faculty, really a wonderful array of things. You know, we, at one time, we didn't have social workers, we didn't have psychologists. We've got some really good support system in place now at Lake Forest High School with a lot of initiative by the faculty. This is a generational change because this is helping our staff now make this a part of the routine practice of every classroom, all lessons. So when it comes to EQ, emotional intelligence, when it comes to relationships with students and among students and faculty, how do we embed that in our lessons themselves so it's not something that just happens after school or in a committee somewhere? And the Flip Flippin' Group is specializing in how to make this a really systemic part of all activity within a school. And I think the reaction from our leadership of the high school and of District sixty-seven is really, really wonderful. One little fact I'd like to just point out, Jen, if you don't mind sharing with everybody, where is this group from?
Do you really need to ask when you hear the name, Flip Flippin'?
No, I just think in general, where are they from?
Texas, believe it or not.
You're supposed to say the great state of Texas, Jen.
I'd need a better accent. And I do want to make clear, pardon?
Just a little humor, I'm sorry there.
Yours is better than mine. This is something, it's really, it's another set of tools in teachers and faculty toolbox. It's something we focused on in five years, it's something that's happening in classrooms, but it's something that we can always be a little bit better at, and it's something that our students have taken a lot of ownership moving forward, so we think that we should be responsive in continuing to grow with them. The last item I have does take place in Illinois, so it is not as interesting, but is important. We will again be attending the Northwest Personnel Association Job Fair, February fourth. It is the largest and truly probably the most prestigious job fair in Illinois, and while we do not anticipate any certified openings next fall, we do have some eternity leaves yet this spring to fill, and it is always good kind of to gauge what's out there, what is kind of the current market, and you never know what might come around, so the block next time. So we will have all of our department chairs, all of our departments will be represented on this day, and it's, again, kind of another team effort. So that said, welcome to two thousand and twelve, and thank you.
Thank you, and at some point, I'd like someone to explain to me how many hats this woman wears in the course of a day and evening.
It's a long list.
Okay, we, thank you for the Human Resources Report. May I have a motion to approve that report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, are there any questions or comments, board members? Okay, moving on then, we may have a roll call vote, please. Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblin?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Scribner?
Aye.
Mrs. Golan? Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have the Consent Agenda. Board members, is there any item you would like removed from the consent agenda to be acted on separately? All right, hearing none. The consent agenda consists tonight of, one, the approval of the financial report and schedule of checks written; two, approval of minutes of a regular meeting from December sixth; an executive session from December sixth; special meeting December seventh; executive session December eighth; executive session December tenth; and the destruction of audio recordings from February ninth, two thousand and ten. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblin?
Aye.
Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mrs. Golan? Aye. Motion carries. At this point, I'd like to circle back and ask Dr. Cooley, Monty Edson, or Dr. Griffith to go back to G liaison reports. Is there any update you'd like to give tonight about NSSCD?
Yeah, board members, President Golan, thank you for doing this. We actually want to bring to the board and our community's attention some progress that has been made with respect to the board's decision and pending decision about continuation or not with the NSSCD. So, Monty is the Board of Education's representative to the NSSCD Board, and Dr. Cooley is our liaison also to NSSCD and serves on their finance committee. So Julie and Monty will do a summary for us. We anticipate that it's possible that we will be recommending action for the Board of Education with respect to our, a pending recommendation on NSSCD in the February Board meeting, so we wanted to bring this to your attention tonight. Dr. Cooley?
Maybe I can give a little bit of background, as I understand it, and you can step in and correct me where I'm wrong, as I'm a new member of the North Shore Special Education District Board. Some, approximately eighteen months ago, our board here gave notice, as required by our contract with the NSSCD, that we were intending to withdraw. During that period of time, since we gave notice, the Finance Committee of the North Shore Special Education District has been working hard to revise the way it bills its members and to make it more equitable. And Julie has been part of that committee, and to date, it looks like the recommendations that have been put forth to the North Shore Special Education District Board and the budget that they will be voting on coming up February eighth are very close to where we want them to be, so we really commend them for that work. And Julie, you might give us more specifics, but we think that after that decision is made on February eighth, assuming that the board adopts the resolution and the budget, that we'll be coming back to you and asking you to move one more program from the NSSCD to here and will remain as members. That would be our intent. So Julie, why don't you sort of give background of what that, where we are and what that would involve in terms of personnel?
Sure. So the programs that we're talking about at the high school are the Educational Life Skills Program, which is a full class that's right in the high school, and then this program that we use for students when they're about eighteen until the day before they turn twenty-two, which we call the Transition Program because they're transitioning to their next step. So those are the programs that we're talking about. As far as NSSCD goes and their cost structure, what was happening with us was that, actually, all the members of NSSCD in their membership fee were supplementing the tuition costs. So if you weren't a high-tuition program user, which we were not in the scheme of things, we were actually supplementing other districts and even non-member districts through our membership fee. So they've switched that, they've cleaned that up, they're making the tuitions much more of a true cost, which of course has increased the tuitions, but again, because we'll be a low user of tuition, that won't harm us. And then they've adjusted their administrative fee and tried to make it true administrative costs only. So that's beneficial to the entire co-op to have it that way so they can choose what they would like to participate in.
Right, so now we're looking at, and Jennifer Hermes has been scrutinizing this very carefully with the business office, looking at very detailed analysis of if we withdraw from the NSSCD as previously considered, you know, what would be the impact on both educational programs as well as financial? Or if we stay with the NSSCD, what are the educational and financial impacts? Were we to withdraw from NSSCD, we think since our programs are ninety-five percent already in our school, it would have very little impact other than, and this could be significant also, however, access to professional development that our teachers would have also, and this could be significant. Unique cases of needs that a child might have, a specific child might have, that we would have to, you know, look into the broader special education community for a solution by not being a member of the NSSCD. It turns out that great progress is being made by the NSSCD with respect to adjusting their programs so that school districts like Lake Forest High School are not subsidizing other high schools. And the shift is, means that the savings, and I'm going to just throw out a ballpark number here because it's not finished-finished, but it could be about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in savings to the district by removing, you know, leaving the membership of the NSSCD, thus exposing us to a lack of access to professional, certain professional development and the possibility of access to unique programming for certain students that currently don't have but could happen. On the other hand, with the new financial model of NSSCD that Monty and especially Dr. Cooley have been working on, it appears that we similarly are looking at another hundred thousand dollar savings by staying in the NSSCD. So I just, I have to report to the board that I'm feeling like this is really, really good news because this is some excellent progress by the NSSCD Board and the NSSCD Finance Committee that Dr. Cooley serves on. One little twist on this, though, is that what we would do is the last program, if we stay with the NSSCD, what we could do is we would bring the last program that is, our students have classroom for in NSSCD, bring them home to Lake Forest. It'd be right here to West Campus. It's called our Transition Program. These are our children that we're responsible for, for the age who qualify for age eighteen to twenty-two, so post-high-school students. To bring that program into our fold of District sixty-seven, we would need to hire the NSSCD staff that currently work in that program. And we could accomplish that, make them our employees, and gain the financial advantage of the new model also. So what it might mean is that next month, we would have a recommendation to stay in the NSSCD on the confidence of the NSSCD Board moving forward with their new model, but also, we would recommend to you, the savings would include absorbing the NSSCD staff that are in the Transition Program and bringing them into the fold here at Lake Forest High School, West Campus. One little twist is that SEDOL currently has, the other special education co-op of Lake County, is housed right here at West Campus with a similar Transition Program for the students of Stevenson, Libertyville, Vernon Hills, and North Chicago High Schools. So there already is a Transition Program here for those communities. So we think there could be an excellent synergy between the two programs. They would be separate, but still, maybe we could share another form of shared service across support services sometime in the future. So I just want to make it clear to the board members, we would be hiring the NSSCD staff and saving, still saving some significant money by staying in the co-op.
To follow up-
To follow up on that, I'd just like to assure, and Julie, you can jump in here, to the parents who might have students currently in this program, that to the students, it would really represent no change, same faces, same staff, same programs. Maybe a change in location for the transition?
Potentially, but would be done on a student-by-student basis through their educational program meeting, their annual meeting would make a decision. There may be some student that would stay in the Transition Program that's currently in Highland Park. We actually anticipate that happening. If someone's ready to age out, you know, in their senior year from high school, we might not choose to move them. On the other hand, we'll explore it. It might even be okay to do that, too. So, case-by-case basis, we'll be looking at that, and again, the students' needs will be foremost in that process. So, thank you for bringing it up, Monty.
I think that's an outstanding solution, because I know for a lot of families, that was the real sticking point. So, I'm glad that you've been able to resolve that, or it looks like you have, in a way that works out well for those families, but it's also a responsible decision for us.
Any questions or comments, other board members? All right, thank you very much, Dr. Cooley. And Monty, thank you for jumping in on this project, and I guess thank you to Marilyn Harlow, who's still out there somewhere, who really kept us up to date on what was going on here and brought this to our attention. Thank you, everyone. In the future, if any of the committees, outside committees that you serve on, which would be Foundation, IASB, EdRed, or NSSCD, if you want to jump in with an update, just let me know, and we'll put it under Liaison Report. I don't think we've heard from...
Sorry, sorry.
Nope, that's fine. I saw Julie raise her eyebrow, and I knew what to do, so, thank you. Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. We've only had one FOIA request. That was from Nancy Thorne at 331 Blajett Avenue in Lake Bluff, Illinois. Only run request, but it does take us to records that date all the way back to 2005, so I bet that kept you busy in your office, Mr. Albus. Any items that board members would like to see on future agendas? All right, hearing none. Our announcements, Tuesday, January 10 to 12 are final exams. Good luck to all of our students. Friday, January 13th is a faculty workday. There's no school. Monday, January 16th is no school. Tuesday, February 14th, that's incorrect, it's going to be, Monday, February 13th will be our next high school Board of Education meeting here in the boardroom. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.